Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrow.
Here.
Councilman Stangem.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Fair.
Here.
Mayor Burr.
Here. Do you hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. Any old business before us? New business tonight is a request of Class C onsite beer permit for Taylor Martin at 302 Delta Street, Clinton, for Cork and Cover located at 365...
Do we need to approve the minutes? Did we vote to approve?
Yeah, review and approval of minutes. Oh, review and approval of the minutes. I said agenda instead. I'm sorry. Do I need to do that again? Okay. I'm sorry. I thought I said the minutes. So the new business is under a request of Class C onsite beer permit for Taylor Martin 302 Delta Street in Clinton for Cork and Cover located at 365 Market Street. Taylor, you mind approaching the podium, state your name and address again, and can you tell us first of all, what's going on? What's the plan? What's the business?
All right. I'm back again asking for another beer permit. So for those who don't know me, my name is Taylor Martin, live at 302 Delta Street. So about two years ago, I opened a pop-up bar on Market Street at Spindletree. And really, the pop-up was just to kind of like see if it was even going to work. It was super successful. So we, the end game has always been to find a permanent space on Market Street. And I found one. So we got the permanent space, but then we were kind of deciding to pivot the business plan. So now it's called Cork and Cover. It's going to be a bookstore café where you can go in, get some books, get a coffee, cocktail, sandwiches, and stuff like that. So.
When do you plan on opening?
We're hoping for December 1st. So soon. Yeah.
Any questions for Taylor? Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Taylor, I wish you all the best.
All right. Thank you, guys.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn Beer Board?
So moved.
Beer Board agenda is closed. Regular meeting. Oh, we have a public hearing too. So we need to, opening the... I'm sorry? Yeah, open the public hearing. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrow.
Here.
Councilman Stangem.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Fair.
Here.
Mayor Burr.
Here. Public hearing is on ordinance number 675. This is rezoning R2 to B2, South Charles G. Severs Boulevard. Is anyone here to speak on behalf of this ordinance? Make a motion to adjourn the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Public hearing is closed. Open to the regular agenda. Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Here.
Councilman McBride.
Here.
Councilman Harrow.
Here.
Councilman Stangem.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Here.
Councilman Fair.
Here.
Mayor Burr.
Here. Do you hear a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. The prayer of this evening be given by Councilman McBride. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Father, we thank you for this day and for your many blessings. I pray now for this meeting. I pray that you would be with us and that you would give us wisdom, as your word says. Father, I pray for safety and provisions for those who work for the city and day and night. I pray that you for their safety, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Jim. You hear a motion for the review and approval of minutes of the previous meeting dated September 26, 2022?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes. At this time, we will recognize any visitors or citizens with a grievance or praise. Okay. Communications from the mayor. Again, when's the, is it December 3rd or 4th, Rogers, the Christmas parade?
Third.
Third?
JB. Third.
What, third? Okay. So just remind that the Christmas parade, December 3rd, probably the last Christmas parade with the streets and everything the way it is today versus what was going to be next year, hopefully. And again, our man, ET Stangem, he's going to be our grand marshal. And we're going to have a lot of, hopefully, Blaze kids, past and present Blaze kids following behind. And I hope there'll be a sight to see. I'm looking forward to that, ET. Well deserved. Under committee reports, City School Board report, Kelly Johnson.
Good evening. Just a few Clinton City updates for you today. First of all, our paving project at South Clinton Elementary School is complete. Many thanks for your all's support on that, for funding that for our school system. But we were able to widen at the top. The fire department had requested for us to carve out a little additional space for them to get around the corner to get to the front. So we worked, the city actually did all of that work for us, and then the paving happened over fall break. It looks fabulous. It is smooth, and parents no longer have to go through potholes to drop off their children. So that is good news. So thank you so much for the city's support on that project. It's fall cookout time, so the Clinton Fire Department is busy cooking our bi- annually hamburgers. And so South Clinton has already held theirs, but North Clinton will be this Thursday. And then Clinton Elementary will be having their fall cookout on Monday for Halloween. So always welcome to come and join us for a hamburger on both of those days. And Jeff Little's crew will do a great job of grilling you up a good burger. And then wanted to let you know that there is our very first home Blaze ballgame tonight. So I would not be doing ET any respect if I didn't give a little Blaze update. But we held a Meet the Blaze night prior to fall break, but this is our first competition game. So Coach Little has his game face on.
Looks like it.
He is ready to go tackle Mount Pig's Gus. I think that's who we're playing tonight. But so that's happening tonight. You can also see our dancers and our cheerleaders. We also have a new color guard team that will be making their debut in just a few weeks. Cross country is ending up, and we had two of our Clinton City School students that went this weekend and competed in the state tournament, and they did very, very well. Did not place to move on, but at least placed personal bests and represented Clinton City Schools very well. So Blaze is still going wonderfully. And our next, I want to put in a plug for what we are doing next. We were lucky enough to get a $7,500 donation from TVA for STEM, for a STEM project. We are putting that towards a flying, a competitive flying drone team for sixth grade. And so it would be a sixth grade competition. You would have to meet certain requirements to be able to be on this team. But there's a STEM curriculum that comes with coding and velocity and how to do the drones. And then there's these obstacles that you fly them through, through the gymnasium, and you go to competitions. And the startup fee for that is $20,000. And so we're taking that TVA $7,500, and we're putting that into a pot to try to raise the $20,000 to get that club started. So before you know it, ET may be on the road trying to do some fundraising for Clinton City Schools to make that happen. But anyway, we hope to start that, start that next school year. So that, we're excited about offering that opportunity. And then I would be remiss if I did not thank 3M. We received our annual donation from 3M, which was in the amount of about $6,700 in 3M supplies. And then he also contacted this me this week and funded $2,500 more for STEM grants for our three schools. So we are certainly blessed with all the community support.
Great. Any questions for Kelly? Thank you, Kelly.
We do have Post-it notes, Larry Gann. If you want Post-it notes, come on, come on by. Scott Ray does have a budget amendment for you.
So do you have any video on this dance moves that he had last week?
Well, he said that City Council might donate some money towards this flying drone, that he would be willing to do the dance for you.
Or the reverse.
That's very good. He's a good dad.
On that note, I'll give you all a praise. I was just sitting here thinking. I've got a three and a half-year-old at North Clinton, pre-ked. I'm looking around the room, and everybody in here has impacted her officer mile. She hugs that man every day at school. The fire, she's been in the fire trucks. Too big, too big. Public Works, the parking lots, everything that you all do makes this a great place. I just kind of, nobody comes up here and praises you, so you all make it happen. So as a dad, I appreciate it.
I'm suspicious of you now. What's going on?
No, no, I'm not going to ask for anything.
What do you want?
Not yet.
Thanks.
But you do have a budget amendment, number one, that does need your approval. There's a lot, lot going on with this. Just the sheer number of federal grants that we have to deal with, it's going to be fast and furious every month with budget amendments. Things change. In general, there's really nothing too exciting to talk about in here. So a general purpose school fund, we're going into fund balance by $11,000. Just, it's really a maintenance of effort issue with the BEP formula. It's something I have to do with the budget. Federal grants, all I am doing is budgeting what has been allocated. All our federal grants are reimbursement grants. The program gets approved. We spend the money. We request reimbursement. We get the money back. And that's how all of our grants work. Any questions?
Any questions for Scott? Do you hear a motion for approval of budget amendment number one?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrow.
Yes.
Councilman Stangem.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilman Fair.
Yes.
Mayor Burr.
Yes. Budget amendment number one passes. Thank you. Thanks, Scott. Clinton Regional Planning Commission report, Councilman Gann.
The BCA and Regional Planning Commission met last Monday, it's October 17th, after a week's postponement. Actually, BCA really didn't have any business because all the items were withdrawn. You can see what was withdrawn in your packet there. The only business that we took up was the planning commission, and it involved one particular man in the projects, John Davenport, and final plat review and preliminary site plan review for property located at Doe Run Boulevard, Charles Severs Boulevard. Property is owned B4. This is for tidal wave car wash, and it's one of the upscale car washes. And he was very thorough in explaining what they wanted to do. And we, subject to a couple of, you know, signatures and some plans and everything, we voted to approve that. Also, I might mention that Mr. Howke and I will be meeting Wednesday morning with the Director of TDOT. TPO will be meeting on Wednesday morning, and the Director of TDOT is going to be there. So we'll get a chance to at least wave at him or maybe talk to him on Wednesday morning.
Any questions for Larry? Thanks, Larry. Clinton Utilities Board report, Councilman Fair, Vice Mayor Fair, I'm Fair, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Tongue twister.
Yeah. The financials this month reflected that July storm. I'm going to have Financial Director supplement the packet so you can have that update. We did not meet the budget projections. However, we understand that happens when you have unprecedented storms. I mean, there was multiple weeks there in July. It was just significant storm after storm after storm. And, but we believe that we'll be fine. We'll meet the budget by year end. That's all I have.
Any questions for Zach? Thank you, Zach. Catherine?
Good evening, guys. I left you all a copy of the September issue of VIP Knoxville. We did a community spotlight on Clinton, and I'm really proud of how it turned out. That's something that we did with the money that you guys gave us for promotion of the city. So I wanted to make sure you all had a copy of that. We greatly appreciate all that you're doing to help Historic Downtown Clinton. Thank you also for all the ways that you are involved with the Antique Festival, with the road closures and the trash pickup. We know that we rely heavily on the city with those festivals. Those are well attended. This one was no exception to that. We had great turnout. I think we had the biggest turnout we've ever had on a Friday. So I think maybe we stopped some traffic a little bit too, and parking became an issue, but it's a good problem to have. We're going to quickly be moving right into the Christmas season. So Historic Downtown Clinton is going to be adding 16,000 new lights to Market Street this year. So you'll have to come down and see that. We think it's going to be an exciting season. Again, it may be the last one where the street looks the way it does now. So we'll be quickly in November switching over to Christmas. On November 26th, which is the Saturday after Thanksgiving, we're going to have the Christmas stroll, followed the following weekend by the Christmas parade. The food trucks are going to be coming back on November 29th. They're going to come back for three Tuesdays, and they're going to be on Market Street. So it's going to be a Christmas edition. We're going to have music playing for those three Tuesdays. The stores are going to be open late. So you can come shop, eat, listen to music, enjoy your community and the festivities. The theme this year is the Storybook Christmas, so you'll be seeing that for the parade, the stroll, and the tasty Tuesdays. And then one last update on our green space. You all contributed $25,000 to this project. We were able to raise the funds quickly to match that. So Public Works has already cut the pavement. They'll be digging out the rest of it this week, and then we'll be able to start our landscaping. And we're still raising money for the pavilion, which my hope is that that will happen in 2023. That's all for me.
Any questions for Catherine? Catherine, I was going to ask you, the tasty Tuesdays, are the roads going to be closed those three weeks?
Yes.
Okay. I thought so. I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Okay. Any questions? Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
General Government Report, Mr. Howke.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to give some updates on some of our projects, on the TAP grant, just some timeline updates. We hope to get design approval and environmental assessment approval December of this year with bidding. Should be sometime winter, probably late winter of this year. Hopefully, we'll have construction by July of this year, if not before. So it's kind of a new update that we got a couple of weeks ago from our engineering firm, Cannon and Cannon. One thing we did want to explain, if you see some work going on, especially on North Main Street, you've seen some sidewalk work already going on by contractor. I've had several phone calls with some of the merchants. That is not part of the TAP grant, but that is a TDOT project. TDOT currently is working on a multi-county ADA curb ramp improvement project in advance of an upcoming resurfacing project in the East Tennessee Maintenance Region. This project includes improvements on Main Street from West Washington Avenue to Clinch Avenue, South Charles G. Severs Boulevard. Some of this work does overlap our planned TAP ramp improvements. We are working with TDOT and their contractor and project engineer to coordinate the work throughout our project area. In other words, their maintenance area has a, has a resurfacing project scheduled for sometime late 2023, probably into 2024. But they're coming along doing some concrete ramp improvement on the sidewalks prior to their resurfacing. Their maintenance part of TDOT didn't realize that we've had a TAP grant from the other end of TDOT doing some of the same work. So when we seen them working a couple of weeks ago, we've had one coordination meeting through them. So some of the stuff they were going to be doing, we will be tearing out once we started our grant. So we've met with them, and so far about half, especially the stuff on the First Baptist side of Main Street, they're not going to do. They're going to wait and let us do during our grant because essentially we'd be tearing them out. But some of the stuff on the courthouse side, they're going to go ahead and do, and we'll take out of our grant. Some of it will remain, some of it won't. But we've had a pretty good meeting, probably for two, two and a half hours, with TDOT, TDOT's, TDOT's maintenance side, TDOT's contractor that's doing the work, our engineers and our staff last week for, like I said, probably two, two and a half hours, looking at every single part of the sidewalks on Main, Main Street. Everything from, which is, which will be phase three, which we've not even designed yet, that we've already been awarded, but we've not designed, which is from Main Street to Clinch and Main, they'll go ahead and do all those intersections, and we'll just work into our design once we do it, which will save us some money. So see them working. That's what's going on with it. Any questions? Anything?
Just, what's the, I know it's, I don't think it's our fault from a delay standpoint, but what's causing this delay?
One of the first phases, when you do the grant, is an environmental assessment, which was approved when we first did, started the grant, year and a half, two years ago. But then we had to acquire some right-of-way because ADA, making the sidewalks ADA. So we required very little right-of-way from each one of the businesses on Main and Market Street, but almost every one of them. When we acquired those right-of-ways and submitted final construction plans, that threw from the environmental part of TDOT, a new environmental study had to be done. So that was the big holdup. We had to do a secondary, a second environmental study, which holds up, held up the whole project. So we're in the process of another environmental assessment.
We're just waiting on approval on that second.
Pretty much.
Any other questions for Roger?
So when this project starts, it'll be, probably won't be completed right now until July of 2024?
Our engineer thinks it can be done within nine to 12 months completely. Yes.
Do you have anything else?
Yes, just on this.
Any questions?
Okay, good deal. On the finance, I will defer to Chris on the financials.
All right. Thank you, Mr. City Manager. September marks 25% of the way through the fiscal year. We had another strong local option sales tax month, up about 13% over the same time last year. Expenditures are holding right below 25%, so our department is doing a great job of keeping their budgets in check. And I know I speak with each of them multiple times a week, trying to make sure that we maximize the budget. We're doing purchase orders when, you know, when the expenditure costs for that, so that we, we're getting quotes and everything. So they're doing a good job of watching their budget, watching overtime, things like that. As I mentioned, local option sales tax, it came in at the last minute last week for me to just barely get it to you. But it, it looks like it's remaining strong, and I don't see any concerns there. You'll start seeing next month, probably finally, our property tax revenue start rolling in. You'll probably notice that even though we're 25% of the way through the fiscal year, we're only about 17% of our revenues, but you'll see that spike in the next couple of months because of the property tax revenue. But overall, a good month for the month of September.
Any questions for Chris? Thanks, Chris.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chris. We do have a resolution later on that concerns our benefits for our employees, our health insurance. Kind of give a few highlights, which we've got a memo on it. I can go over it. Angela, you want to? Okay, I'll let Angela. She wants to tell it.
Get close to the microphone.
So all of our plans have remained the same for 2023. So we've been really lucky there. The other thing is our health insurance premium has been lower than expected. It came in with a 5% increase, which for these days and times is excellent. For the dental, the vision, and life insurance, we did not have an increase at all this year. So we're holding steady there, too. So overall, it looks good for next year.
Great. Any questions for Angela? Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Only other thing I've got is the Public Works Department's leaf collection season began today and will continue through Friday, January 20th, 2022, or 2023, actually, Bill. A copy of the leaf collection policy schedule is posted on the City of Clinton's website at www.clintontn.net.
Great. Is that it?
That's it.
Any questions for Roger? I'm sorry.
Oh, Halloween activity, yes. The Parks and Recreation Department will sponsor a Halloween activity this Sunday.
Two to five.
Two to five p.m. at the Clinton Community Center.
Great.
Do you need donations for candy, or you covered?
For him or for the kids?
Always need donations for candy. Taylor's handling all that, so she's been wrapped up.
Roger, can you update us on Riverside about where, how they're doing, progressing, and when you think that's going to be opened up?
They're moving along pretty good. I think all the street lining on the trails up, a lot of the sidewalk curbing is done. They have not done the paving yet. The drainage work is completed. The gravel for the road has been installed. They're still got to work on the bolt ramp. Still has to be repaved. The parking area for Lakefront Park still has to be repaved. Talked to Lynn last week, and actually, myself and Lynn are going to try to walk it one day this week and talk to Blade Lot people. Possibly, we can open up Riverside prior to getting the parking lot for Lakefront Park and the bolt ramp open, when we get the road open. I would say probably by Thanksgiving, we could probably get the road open, even if we don't have the parking lot and the ramp. But probably getting real close.
So when they're through with that little project, and they're, are they pretty much done?
They should be done, yes.
Good.
I saw Lynn last week and asked him, and he seemed, I said, well, how have they done it? They've done a good job. And he was complimentary, which those, if you get that out of Lynn, I guess, that's good.
One thing we're working on, talking about the walking trail, and just how they've done a good job.
There's some damage to Meadowbrook and Willow Street, so we're trying to get them to help us out maybe with doing some asphalting there on those streets. We're working with TDOT and Blade Lot on that. We've requested they, they reasphalt those two streets for us. We haven't got a reply yet.
Any other questions for Roger? Thanks, Roger. Under ordinances and resolutions, the first reading of new ordinances is ordinance number 676, rezoning R2 to R3 on West Broad Street. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Larry, do you want to speak on that?
That is a PUD, basically. I think it's putting several pieces together from Broad Street toward the railroads. I think you have a map there in your... You can see what, it's kind of pieced together, but it's a PUD.
And that's why you needed the zoning for R2 to R3. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrow.
Yes.
Councilman Stangem.
Here.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilman Fair.
Yes.
Yes. Ordinance number 676 passes on the first of two readings. Under, under second and final reading is ordinance number 675, rezoning R2 to B2 on South Charles G. Severs Boulevard. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any further discussion? Larry, can you speak on this, please?
This is the property, before you get to Mayor Napolit, this side of the building there, and on the other side of what we've previously approved for perhaps commercial use. But it's kind of a strip of land in there that I think they're going to do some residential areas.
And I was, I remember this is more back, kind of where the trailers are, kind of back to the houses on Lagoon.
It's not directly on the road, is it?
Right. It's not, it's on the road. But when that is developed, then they still have to get approval for what's going to go in there. So it's, have some latitude as far as that.
It'll be on this side of the old church.
Yes.
The senior citizens center.
Yeah, yeah. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrow.
Yes.
Councilman Stangem.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilman Fair.
Yes.
Mayor Burr.
Yes. Ordinance number 675 passes on second and final reading. Under resolutions, resolution number 826, this is the Public Entity Partners, Safety Partners Matching Grant. Hear a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion is second. Any other discussion? Roger, you want to reiterate what you just feel like you need to?
It's just a matching grant. We get through our, from our liability and workers' comp insurance carrier once a year. It's for safety equipment, cameras, various things we can apply for.
Okay. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Gann.
Yes.
Councilman McBride.
Yes.
Councilman Harrow.
Yes.
Councilman Stangem.
Councilman Hatmaker.
Yes.
Councilman Fair.
Yes.
Mayor Burr.
Yes. Resolution number 826 passes. Any old business for us? I do want to give a shout out. I'm probably miss people like I always do. But Angela did a great job on the, on the cookout Saturday, right? Saturday? And I'm sure there was a lot of people that helped and supported that, but it was, it was very nice, very well attended. So I did want to thank you, I mean, in public for that. And I think it's, hopefully, it's an annual thing. And I think it's, hopefully it's an annual thing we continue to do, so thank you very much. Any, um, new business before us? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Any adjourn?